This meeting is called. All those that can, please rise for the Plage of Allegiance.
Plage allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess before we read the agenda for this evening, I want to welcome Tim Askew to the committee as the winner of yesterday's election. It's my understanding you have been sworn in?
I have, yes.
We're good to go. Amber, don't we normally reorganize, create the chairman first thing after election? Do you want to do that next week?
I would say that because your position has not shifted, we can wait one more week. So what I, my recommendation is that you guys have time to talk as a committee and that you decide what positions you want to rotate into and that we vote those at the next meeting.
Okay.
And the way that works is that I open at the chair of the meeting and then turn it around while you do your votes. So Steve and I will, will discuss that and I think you all need to discuss amongst yourselves the positions and we'll vote them at the next meeting.
And secondarily, it's not in the agenda. So at this point, we'll stay with the organization as it is. Obviously, that means I'm sitting here in this chair and we don't have a vice chair yet. So the next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent and report of the director of finance and operations, school committee member reports, approval of DECA California trip in particular, approval of the Student Opportunity Act plan. We discussed it last week, excuse me, the last meeting. And then a discussion of preparation of the school committee for town meeting, which is coming up on the 24th, citizens' requests and then adjournment. So with that, I'll ask for a motion for approval of minutes from meeting of February 28th.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of February 28th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none, since there's five of us here, the vote would be five, whatever. All those in favor? Aye. Good. That's five zero zero. The next item is the superintendent's report, please.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Askew. Good to have you aboard and have our seats full and ready to go. It's been a very busy week. I'm going to keep my updates succinct for you, but I think there's some good things that I want to walk through with you and make sure that we also have them on the public record with good news. I was able to have dinner with your hired superintendent beginning July 1, Alan Borshes, and we had our first coordination meeting, she and I, to talk about transition. It was productive and positive. It was also just a chance for she and I to get to know each other better and for me to be clear with her that she can have all the opportunities she needs to build transition, that we welcome her to any events and different things that give her an opportunity to be seen in the public. We discussed her starting to move towards putting out a welcome letter to families and faculty in the next couple of weeks and just a really positive meeting so that we get a continuity of leadership transition. We've started some nice shared documents that leadership team will have ability to put content into so that when she arrives, things are organized and ready to go for her. She's very excited to assume the position of superintendent in Westboro and feels fortunate that you selected her. So I think that is good news. If you have any questions about that, thoughts or anything, I'm very open to just any conversation. Also wanted to indicate that it was a really successful Westboro connects event that we were co-hosted site-wise for over at the Borough Sugar Shack. They did an International Women's Day event, which was, last year had been the first year we had it in this room here. This was a second year event. We moved it over there. It was very successful, well-attended. The energy was just positive networking. We had multi-age groups of women there across all parts of our community and it was just a really great event. I look forward to attending the debrief on that and thinking towards the future. And we talked about also ideas around different parallel events where we can just create that community connection of networking with each other. So that was really wonderful. And that was last Thursday. I want to start by also acknowledging that our families, our Muslim families are in the start of their holy season of Ramadan and I'm wishing them all the best as they move into their celebrations. And we, I think, somebody had asked me informally, so I'll mention it here, really once students begin to become of age where they are fasting at the high school, Gibbons is usually the area where we see our young Muslims want to begin that process. And we have areas where they can sit where they're, they're not near food. It's not then difficult for them at lunch. And we also have prayer spaces when needed. So I think it's, the prayer spaces are around all the time, year-round as needed. But I think it's just an acknowledgement of training and education for our community to know that those accommodations are always part of how we recognize the amazing diversity we have in this community and our observant families. And given that you just voted your calendar change, I just wanted to acknowledge it, you know, and, and let you know that I think while that was a complex and a really well-managed discussion, I think that families moving into Ramadan now will feel extra seen and celebrated. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Last pieces that I met with the AFC, Anita and I take our little show on the road. And we had a really engaged and meaningful discussion with FinCom about, the vast majority of their discussion was around the capital. And there's the complexity of the one article, I'm going to talk about it tonight when we come together to that point in the meeting around the preparation for town meeting. And we were also then at select board last night. If you watched that, you saw how I updated and how Anita and I gave that update, but we'll talk more about that. Both of those meetings were very positive. We had a variety of split votes on the capital items at FinCom. And I'll talk about those when we, we do each item. And they unanimously approves the budget for next year, eight zero in support of our budget as presented and carried across the street after you guys approved it. So that's very good news. And I think select board is now reviewing and will do, be doing the same voting between now and the start of town meeting. So that's good news on the working meetings. And then lastly, we did push out today a message about upcoming town meeting. And we did our superintendent's spotlight budget video again. I think you should find a moment to watch that. I think it's 20 minutes. It's about 20 minutes. It covers our budget. It covers the warrant articles and gives families a chance to get information that they might need without having to come out for a night. And last year, that was very successful. People really enjoyed being able to watch it, pick out the pieces they wanted to really think about. And so I encourage all families and faculty to look at that between now and when you attend town meeting. So it's busy. That's a little bit more detail than you usually get in a week. So that's my report for tonight.
Very good. Daniel?
Nothing to report tonight.
Anita? Been too much time FinCom and Portis Selectmen, I guess. Okay. Ellie?
So I was able to host an assembly at Mill Pond with one of the other student leaders at the high school named Brooke Rosenstein. It's actually Kristen's daughter. And she was able to talk about small acts of kindness. And then I piggybacked off of that with acts of kindness towards the environment. So I did a kind of a review on what we can in Kent compost and then how to use the new Trex recycling program. So we're continuing that interbuilding cooperation on green initiatives. It's really exciting.
How well was it received?
It was great. They were very respectful. They were very invested, too. A lot of them were raising their hands when I, I had a helper come down. I had Sarah's daughter come down and help me, too. And I brought some props and she got to hold them up. And all of the students loved raising their hands and telling me where, which bin they thought they should go in at lunch. So it was great. It was really great.
Very good. Thank you. Tim, your first time?
Yeah. Nothing to report, but just would like to say I'm incredibly excited and honored to be here and ready to get to work. So nothing else to report, but thank you.
Coop?
Nothing to report, just one reminder on behalf of the Sustainable Westboro Committee. I'd like to invite everybody to the Westboro Environmental Action Fair. That's taking place this Saturday at the High School Auditorium. And well, in this context, what's interesting, we have participation from every school in our district. There would be 33 student exhibitors, 75 posters in the Art for Earth poster competition. The high school art students created a promotional piece, which you will probably see at the entrance. And the eighth graders put together a streaming video that involved 24 teams, 60 seconds per team. So I invite everybody to come and participate in this. Thank you.
Steve?
Nothing to report, but I would like to welcome Mr. Askew to the school committee. He ran a very smart, well-organized campaign and I'm really glad that he's here.
Carol?
I'm going to echo that. I have nothing to report, but I just wanted to congratulate Tim. Really excited to have another Ranger on, on, on the board. So looking forward to working with you.
And I welcome Tim as well, although we've already had a welcoming discussion before the meeting. I would like to report tonight movement, if you will, regarding the discussion that we had from Ms. Sorenson last meeting or the meeting before. But anyway, I would like to address my report tonight to the comments made by Ms. Sorenson at our last meeting in regards to the condition she perceives at Armstrong School. She also put her concerns in writing to the school committee and as such, the school committee will respond in lieu of others within the school system. To that end, communication should continue with the school committee rather than others, simply because that's the way it started and there's another reason why. In the interim, the school committee also received a rebuttal from a parent of a student at Armstrong School to the issues raised by Mrs. Sorenson. As my plan to respond in due course to each issue raised by Mrs. Sorenson, and we will do that by assembling the various documents, reports and studies which we are, which are associated with Armstrong School, as well as the fact that we have same set of documents for each one of the other schools that details the information in the school, the design, various study reports, et cetera, relative to the health of the school. When that information is complete, we will place the record on the school website for all to see and to understand. And this is only fair since every parent is entitled to the answers to the points raised in the discussion offered at our last meeting. However, I also think it is responsive to answer two of the points made in the past discussion. The floor tiles in the school are not asbestos tiles. And that is documented. And the second issue is the roof failure and the replacement completed in 2023 was preceded by an inspection to determine that there was no mold present as a result of the leakage prior to the re-roofing. So our schedule to complete the summary of studies, reports and inspections for the public distribution will be as soon as possible after the upcoming town meeting. So hopefully the results are good, by the way, against all these things. Certainly, we can't make the age of the various wings any younger, but certainly the school and the school administration has done its best to maintain the building and all the pieces of it to the best of our ability. Certainly, as we get through the roof issues that we've had, particularly most of that will happen at this town meeting, knock on wood, that we can then deal with some of the issues that deal with the, the age of components at Armstrong and perhaps in other places as well. So with that, it's, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that we heard what she said, that others did as well and responded to it, and that we will, in due course, supply all the, all the responses to the questions that she asked or perhaps perceived that existed in the building. So with that, we can move to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the DECA California trip. Thank you.
Wearing my DECA shirt tonight. Hello again. My name is Amanda Ugrnow. I am the DECA advisor for the Westboro High School. I was here a couple of weeks ago prior to get approval for the overnight trip to states. I have to say that as both being a Westboro alum and a Westboro employee, this might have been the best thing I've ever done through Westboro. We brought 37 students with us to the states competition. We had five students placed within the tops six and five of their respective categories. And then we had a bunch more students placed within the top 10 of their categories. Because of this, that means those top five students have a place to compete at the international competition in Anaheim, California from March 26th, I'm sorry, March, April 26th through May 1st. And we also have seven Leadership Academy spots as well. I obviously have not got an approval for this trip from you all, but I have a planning document which I have there, linked in, but I also have updated copies, I believe I sent to Lynn Hurley earlier as well. This trip is something that these kids are really looking forward to and they really hope that you guys take into consideration that we were actually complimented by the hotel manager, that we were one of the best behaved chapters that were attending the conference, which I was very impressed with. And I did explain to the students that they must be on their best behavior or we will not be going to any of these trips, nor will DECA be really a thing. Most of these students, I wish I had brought a couple with me today because they could talk more ad nauseam, but I have no business acumen whatsoever. But I will be honest, I learned so much from just the students telling me. They were all in very professional dress. I'm going to have to now buy a suit if we go to ICDC. But essentially, on the planning document, it has most of the breakdown of the cost, as well as the breakdown of chaperones that will be needed, the Leadership Academy spots. In the past, the Leadership Academy was given to students who placed, but in order to make this equitable and reasonable, I have implemented a, in 500 words or less, question that students can answer and that the two business teachers will do a blind poll of any students that do apply to go. Part of this trip, there is a, a night at Disney that the students are very excited about. But most of it is both either doing a Leadership Academy or competing to win what they call glass, which is a big glass, huge. So fingers crossed for those students as well. And does anyone have any questions for me, any concerns?
I'm sure we will. We'll start with Tim.
No questions for me.
Coop?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Well, first of all, congratulations to all the students that made it. Looks like this was a, quite an achievement. How did we do in the previous years? I don't have a comparison. I'm just curious.
I'm not 100% sure, as I literally just became the advisor maybe a month ago. But they have, I think, this is only the third year of the DECA club itself.
I see.
They did compete last year. ICDC, no students won, but there was a big handful of students that did place to go compete. It is smaller this year. When I was speaking with the state advisor, she did say that their, their, the Massachusetts chapter had grown from 6,000 members last year to 10,000 members this year. So it was a lot larger of competitiveness. And many of our students probably did very well within their respective events. It was just that there was just so many students and trying to pick the top five and six, you know, all numbers games and whatnot. So that's kind of how it worked.
That's a bit more impressive. Well, thank you very much. I'm, I'm a big fan of this trip. So good luck to all the students that go if they approved.
Steve?
I have no questions, but I do applaud you for taking on the role of being advisor. I'm familiar with DECA and I know how much work it is. So, and it's especially wonderful that in only the third year that they're already able to, to place the way that they have. So, you know, I know that you said that you've only been there for a month. I imagine the workload's going to increase as, as the students succeed. So they're lucky to have you as an advisor. I support this trip.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just comments that, thank you again for putting in your time and advising the kids and being the club's advisor. I've heard really wonderful things about DECA. I think that it's such an amazing program and, and helps to really prepare the kids, gives them confidence, speaking abilities, you know, public speaking abilities and really helps to prepare them for, especially for those who want to go into business entrepreneurship or really any, any field. So I'm also a big fan of this and I thank you for all the work that you're putting into it.
Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. And if you've already answered them, I apologize because I didn't hear it. But what's the cost to the students?
Sure. So it depends on how many students come with us. Currently, students don't have to come if they place. So I only have three students competing who will come with us. And then Divasri Damodariyan, she is a state officer. So she will not, she will be with her state officer as their leader. So currently, I only have three students confirmed for the trip, but we have seven leadership spots. The Leadership Academy application is closing on Friday at 2:37 PM. And then I will work with the business teachers on Monday to pick students. And then registration is due at midnight at, on the 19th. And that's when I will have the final numbers for students to go. In the past, what I have been told is that is a lot, it's a very like, very quick, like from states now turn over to them. We were just there last, last weekend. So it's now kind of like, really trying to turn that around. The less students go, the more expensive it's going to be. I have a cost breakdown in there, but more than likely, it's going to be about $2,000 per student. If we have all 10 students go, the three competing and the seven for the Leadership Academy will be less, only because I need to make sure that my trip is covered as well as if I need another chaperone to come with me. ICDC, DECA ICDC's ratio is eight to one. So because we have 10 leadership spots, I would need a second person who I've already had parents volunteer to come with us. And also, I technically have not booked the flights. So I'm not 100% sure what the exact flight class would be because I haven't had it approved by school committee. So that number gives us a little bit of padding, that if I need to give some of that money back, we can do that as a chapter. But that gives us enough padding to make sure that we have enough for both chaperones, if we need both chaperones, as well as the flight cost itself.
Okay. And the other thing in looking at your, your agenda here, I noticed that for the first couple of days, they start relatively early in, in the day after you get there. The next day is eight o'clock in the morning. But you don't have an end time for those, those couple of days. So what happens to them? Are they there all day long, five to five o'clock?
Yes. So that's really interesting as well. Most of the time, what will happen is so that the Leadership Academy, which is the Thrive Academy on the agenda, goes from eight to four PM every day. And then in the evening, there are sometimes different kinds of activities going on. There may be, I think, like cornhole, photo booth, DJ dances stuff. Some chapters will go to eat as a chapter at different restaurants that are nearby. But most of the day is competing or doing Leadership Academy. They'll get specific numbers that they, or specific times that they'll be competing through. And then in the evening is kind of a rest time for them because it, it goes all day. A lot of, a lot of kids will very much be tired by the time that they're done with their competitions and their Leadership Academies. But there's also time to then network and meet other students from other chapters. All of the hotel that we're staying at, the Embassy Suites Anaheim South, is just all Massachusetts students. So they might see some friends that they met at the competition for states that they can hang out with as well during that time. And then also, I didn't put this on there, but there are academies for me as an advisor to learn more about how to run the academy, how to thrive, how to run the academy, how to run our chapter, how to make it thrive, how to build membership, how to do school-based enterprises. There's a lot of different moving parts with DECA that I did not realize existed. And so that will be something that I would be doing as well. There's always adult supervision going on during the whole conference, though. And then I could always put curfew as well on this document and send you an updated information so that you have it. But they must be in their rooms no later. I think every night's a little different. It usually goes from like 11 to 12 at the latest, but most of the time I do a head count before we go to bed and then have them off to their rooms.
So in those nights where you don't have a scheduled activity, will they be in the hotel doing the other things that we're talking about?
Some, some, some nights will be at the hotel. Some nights will be at the convention center. I believe sometimes the, especially the award ceremonies can go quite long because I understand that we have chapters coming from every single state, multiple chapters for everyone that placed at their state competition. And so I believe the conference attendance is going to be around, I'm trying to remember, like, they said like 30,000 people. So there will be a lot of students and advisors there as well. So it depends on the night what we might be doing. I'm still trying to figure out some pieces because again, I'm new to this. So I'm getting bits and pieces from different advisors in different chapters. I've made a lot of friendships with people and have a couple of advisors who've been really helpful in this process as well.
Very good. Anybody else have comments?
No, I have follow-up questions. So one of the questions is, have you thought about any fundraising efforts? Once you've identified what the total cost is going to be and how many students are participating, is there any minimum amount of students that you would need that, you know, to register or to, I guess, make the trip happen? That's kind of two separate questions.
Sure. Yeah. So fundraising efforts, we've actually already fundraised as a chapter about $4,000 for the year. That money can be used as needed for the chapter. However, I don't, again, I'm, I'm the new advisor, so I don't have everything of like where that money came from, what was it allocated for, how did it go through. We do have a treasurer that her and I have been working together to go through some books that are not quite accurate that I and Mary McDermott have been trying to work through as well to make sure that they both match up with both what has been placed in the student accounts as well as what was reported by the previous advisor. So we've, we talked today, actually after school, about some fundraising things that we would like to do. We also want to do a lot more community outreach to our local businesses because these students need real-world practice of what it means to run a business and do different pieces. So we met at 2:37 this afternoon and talked a lot about the future of the chapter, as well as different things that we want to do for fundraising. The kids always love the bake sales. So we're definitely going to have a bake sale between now and April 26th to start fundraising as well. And then there is no minimum amount of students that can be registered. So essentially, the three students that are competing, two of them are a team and one is an individual. If any of them decide that they don't want to come, even at states competition, there was a chapter that only brought one student to compete because they were the only ones that placed at states. The seven Leadership Academy spots are flexible. Essentially, that if I don't, if we don't have anyone apply for the Leadership Academy, then I don't have to bring those seven students. It's not like a requirement to do so. Would it be easier on me to not bring seven students on a plane with me? Absolutely. But I want to give the opportunity for anyone in DECA, not just the ones that placed, not just the ones that compete, but any student who is part of the DECA. We have 90 We have 98 students who are members of the program. I wanted to give them the opportunity to come to these Leadership Academies because the goal of the Leadership Academies, they have all different meanings, but the Thrive Academy is to help grow the chapter. And then there are other ones specifically for seniors who are graduating to help them move on after they go off to college. And then there's one specifically for freshmen to start building their leadership skills so that they can start leading the clubs when they're upperclassmen. Those spots are just spots to have. It doesn't, I don't have to bring those students with me, obviously I would love to. But the three that are competing that did say yes, those would be the three that are definitely going with me.
Okay. And just as a comment to Steve's question, I mean, I don't have an answer because I've never been to the DECA intern, I mean, the national competition, but I have been to a few robotics and destination imagination global competitions. And oftentimes, they create this world that is just geared on the competition itself. So there's always activities going on. The kids by the end of the day are absolutely exhausted and they usually just head. There's not too much downtime for them to be off on their own. I would think that, I think that that potentially could be what Steve is concerned about. I would also be concerned about that to make sure that we are, you know, keeping them within that. But usually they have the whole campus or whatever the area is designated for that and you'd have to physically take either a taxi or something to get out of there.
Yeah, so I can also speak to that, too. So we all get DECA like lanyards that have our names on them. It says what chapter we're from. And we all get wristbands, depending on the hotel, it's usually a color. And those have to stay on the whole conference. No student can walk around without a wristband or a lanyard, or they will be fined, which then our chapter gets fined. The rules at states were $50 if they lost a wristband, $5 if they lost their tags. It's a different price at ICDC, which hasn't been released to me yet. But there are also security guards at pretty much every hotel entrance and exit. And then the conference center itself is also have security and onsite as well. And so, you know, students really just can't go anywhere. And the conference center at Anaheim is only accessible really by bus or taxi. So students can't just walk off kind of and go to a mall or walk over somewhere else. It's really, they would have to, they would have to call a cab and I would not allow that. And so it's pretty, pretty confined to just our hotel. Like the kids can't hop between different hotels because of the wrist color bands. They get on the bus that's specifically for their hotel. And then the convention center, similar to the Hines, is like one way in, one way out sort of piece.
All right.
Anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the DECA trip to California.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you for stepping forward for this. It's obviously a great experience for the kids. All those in favor? Aye? Five zero zero. Thank you.
All right, Amanda, you are off to California. Thank you for coming. Next, I'm going to turn it over to keep us moving to Dr. Mayer, who's going to take you through approval of the Student Opportunity Act plan that he went through with you at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I gave you the context at the prior meeting along with a memo, which is attached here, has a link to the draft plan. This is something we need to submit to the state after it gets approved by the school committee. And as I explained to you, it's like a compliance document that they want to have a student opportunity plan for every school district in the state. And they are very sort of specific about what they would like to see in it in terms of how you analyze data and present a plan for moving forward to address the needs of some subpopulation in the community that is underachieving based on your, you know, analysis. And as I told you last, at our last meeting, I just, you know, the thumbnail was we want to focus on chronic absenteeism because nearly, for some population subgroups, there's nearly triple the rates of chronic absenteeism. And obviously, if, for those students, it's much harder for them to succeed academically if they're not in school and all of their, you know, outcomes in terms of test scores, passage rate, graduation rate are substantially lower. So we think that by focusing on that, chronic absenteeism problem that's outlined in the plan here, we would be, you know, doing a service, obviously, for those kids, so.
It was kind of obvious in the report that that is an issue. What I was thinking as I was reading it is how now, once we've identified it as a problem, how do we attack it? How do we actually make a difference to those families for reasons that are their own as to why they're not in school?
Sure. Well, let me first say that we currently do have, you know, procedures in place at the various schools to be reaching out to families. We're doing, you know, we know who the students are that are chronically absent, but we do think that we have some ideas that are outlined in the report that might help us in terms of creating more connection with the families and being more proactive in reaching out. We would use our ELL teachers because a lot of those students are coming from ELL background, from their first language is not English. And so through that means and through more consistent like and persistent communication from the school administrative staff about the need for them to be in school, it might involve being a little bit tougher in terms of our, you know, expectations and being clear about the consequences and maybe showing the families what happens if their kids don't come to the school.
My concern, I guess, in the issue simply is whether it's a family issue in terms of, of employment, the ability of the family to have the kid go to school versus having to have the kid go somewhere else during the day. I'm wondering whether it's that kind of an issue more so than for the reasons you mentioned that ELL needs, that school's not fun, that they can't learn for their own reasons.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I love your questions. I think every family's individual, every set of needs that drive what creates your family culture and the opportunities to get your kids where they need to be and get yourself where you need to be, need to be handled individually. And so it's an increase in counseling. It's, but, but everything we do is grounded in connected relationships. And what you realize is we can feel that we're doing appropriate communication and connection, but it might not be the right way for a certain family to understand the importance of school and that we have resources there that serve their family and their students to, to succeed, to be happy at school and to have a positive experience. And so I think it pushes us to look for adding in additional strategies. And I think Daniel and the team did a really good job to just look at increasing our communication about the value of school to those families and the importance of making sure that we would play a role in trying to be as helpful as we can to understanding their family network and what it takes to make them get everything accomplished. I also think that, you know, the work that Jack did at Gibbons with a summer program that created walk-in opportunities for students to come and to have some of the summer experience where they build a tighter affiliation to school is an example of a win-win where we saw feedback from students that there was more they wanted to do with that. So it plays off of things we're doing, but also increasing it. And I think for some of our families, it continues to be transportation, work issues. So we've moved to flex scheduling as needed for some families and for some students, especially at the high school, if a student needs to work, to build a more flexible schedule for them. So this captures those just targeted opportunities where we can do better. And then the state just wants to see that we're being innovative. And so this is our report that we are basically saying, yes, we are trying to be even more innovative than we were.
Yeah, I think it's certainly, based on what I read, is certainly a need, but more importantly, success of the program is the most important thing we can, we can find, I think, for them as well as for, for the school system. Anybody else? Questions? Comments?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So is this, is this, the funding for this program is going to be provided by the state?
This funding for, funding for the form, for the program is in the way of the, it's chapter 70 money that we get as a town. And so that they just, they want to, they want to basically say to the towns, and because we are giving you chapter 70 funds, we would like you to, to focus on, yeah. So, so you focus on some kind of issue pertaining to low performance of a subpopulation in your community because that's the spirit in which this chapter 70 money is allocated to towns. So they're not giving us new money per se, it's existing funds that we're get, that town gets every year, and they're just asking us to make sure that we carve out programs of something of this sort in the spirit of receiving those funds.
And I think increase in our funding this year was like 200,000. I mean, Westboro is not a community where there's a vast crisis around attendance and continued recovery from kind of COVID skill loss due to the way that we've done whatever we've done and just the quality of the family effort as well to help kids recover. So, you know, it's a state expectation that is for the all, all of Massachusetts. So, you know, it's kind of a broad sweeping brush. And I think we've picked the best personalization of the area in Westboro that works on it. But certainly there's not, I wouldn't want people to think there's a vast amount of new money targeted to this. Chapter 70 goes into the town's package for building the budget and, you know, Westboro didn't get a giant bump. Some communities got very large increases and the state wants to tie a performance benchmark to it.
Okay, so just one last, thank you. One last question is the figure in the draft plan, that's, that's the figure for three years?
Yes.
So it's the same dollar that we're going to stretch to do other things?
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One is relating to the allocation. So you're talking about if you're breaking down the 285, you're allocating 170 towards classroom teachers and specialists. So does that mean that there's additional hiring happening for, or what does that exactly mean?
No, it's, it's basically saying that we have staff that are currently working on this issue and this is, you know, our estimated cost of like what they, that, you know, the time that they would spend on as, as part of their FTEs. So, you know, we have ELL staff, we have administrative staff, and it's just saying that, you know, every, every time we focus on a particular issue, it costs money, you know, a person's time. And so it's an estimate of the amount of time using our existing staff.
Okay.
They, they basically want to see that you've budgeted it out. And, and so I do think with our existing staff, by focusing, you know, a variety of conversations within and between schools with administrators in the ELL and general education staff and our counselors, when you total it up, it comes out to the budget that's there. It's, it's, it's basically, they ask you for a back-of-the-envelope kind of, you know, estimation of costs.
Okay, so then, okay, so I guess then what I'm trying to understand is, is then the impact. So when was this enacted? I mean, we must have had this, this is how many?
This is the second, basically, yeah, second cycle.
So six, okay, so.
We're like five or six years in.
So then, did we talk about in the report, you know, the, sorry, sorry. Trying to remember what I read. Where, where was the targeting? Because the, the L issue seems like it was in 2022 as well, right? I mean, the English language learners, but that's within the three-year, the first three-year plan?
Within the first, the first plan focus, it has a slightly different focus. It was looking at, we were talking about co-teaching and the importance of inclusion, and that was in the first plan. So there's a slightly different emphasis.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep.
All right.
I know this is a three-year plan. Will data be collected after each year?
Well, certainly, yes, we will be looking at the data.
Okay. And then the other question I have is about the steps for the enhanced engagement, things like the family support home visit. Have those not yet been implemented? Are those entirely new steps?
We do home visits in some cases across some populations, but there would be an increase. It would be targeted specifically at the absenteeism. This is like a quiz, I'm seeing if I'm right, that I read your.
Yeah, you, you are right. It would be an increase. It would be, again, we're, we're, we're having focused conversation between the buildings that'll be helpful here. But yes, it'll be, we have done home visits, but not always explicitly around this particular problem. It's been more like acclamation and general outreach, but this is going to be more targeted.
Be all good? Is there a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan?
I'd like to move to approve the Student Opportunity Plan Act.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye? Five zero zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Askew's officially on the record now. He's going to be in the minutes. That's good. Well done. All right. Next up, if you're comfortable with that, Mr. Chair, I'll move to preparation for town meeting.
Please do.
All right. So this is where I start to feel like I've said these things about a million times because we've been on the road taking this to different people for discussion. We're going to women's club this week as well. That's a fun one. So I wanted to, I think, just for us to think about preparation for town meeting, we're a week and a half out. It's important that we continue to encourage people to come and vote on the budget and the work of the town. We met and I feel like at this point, our preparation is pretty solid. Next week, we'll be focusing on doing one short targeted presentation with kind of cleaned-up slides for each of our warrant articles. So that's basically what's happening right now across our teams. And those will all get shared to you before we present them. Sometimes we're not really polishing those up until Friday morning, but then we'll share them to you and you get opportunities to give feedback on them. You, they're basically re-combinations of all the various ones we've done. And so if you already have feedback and things you want us to focus on, you can share those to me. I think that the budget presentation is fairly clean and we can talk about the fact that basically it's salary this year, our whole increase other than about 12,000. Everything else internally, we did a lot of reallocation, cutting, moving, and, and set the budget up to put as much money as we could against the salary. And I think people have understood that. The questions have been pretty focused on that. And so we'll create a presentation that will work similarly. What I want to focus on right now is the capital articles that all still need to be vote approved by select board. And FinCom is waiting on one of these. And I want to focus tonight on the ADA and how that is going to come forward. So we'll put our energy there because I think you just need to understand where we are with it. We don't require further action from it. You've voted it, all of these, you've voted to support them unless you want to change your mind. I think we're in good shape. But now it's, it's the select board really looking at and the town manager and all the consultants figuring out how the motions will be framed for funding options. So I went back to them and I presented, Anita and I presented to them. The good, good news of, of just kind of that we were able to bring forward is that, oh wait, sorry, can you forward that, Daniel? I keep, I'm trying, I'm clicking forward on my own. Go to the next one. There you go. The Hastings ADA is the interior improvements to make sure that the building is in compliance for handicap accessibility. It's pretty comprehensive. It makes lots of internalized changes. And we were carrying, Capitol Committee was carrying $5 million as the placeholder. The bid came in at 2149. So that was a good number to see, much, much better than we thought. And so we take that number, which is the base bid that's ready to award if we're voted approval at town meeting. Can you move to the next slide, please? And we need to embed 300,000 for contingency and we're carrying 175 for an OPM. So that brings, and that's plus or minus, because that hasn't been bid yet, but we did enough research to know we're in a target zone there. but we did enough research to know we're in a target zone there. And the total project request would be the 2,624. So about just over a half of what we thought, we were, under half of what we thought we were going to need, which is really good news. And so we went back to the select board, and we basically said, we're, the most important thing is we're seeking their support for the project, that they will vote, that they believe this project should move forward. Their approval is essential in so many ways on town meeting floor. And that they can, the funding discussions are between select board and the town manager and their advisors. And that we, they can amend existing articles to cover the project. That's one of their options. Or they could borrow clean for that amount. So they've got decisions they need to make, and we gave them some backup information that FinCom had asked us for. So if you go to the next slide. FinCom really wanted to look at what were all the expenditures that have taken place to date on Hastings. And so I just shout out to my colleague here on the left, who did the best forensic accounting work I've seen in a long time. And we were joking that like we do our best work at like 11:30 at night on the phone while we're trying to figure out the numbers. We went back through everything. And so there are two articles here that are funds that have been voted positively to do the HVAC work at Hastings. And at last year's October town meeting, they voted to extend the scope of those articles to allow funding for us to do design. The original motion, we had requested them to amend these articles to allow us just to use it for the AD work, to do design and then move into the project. At the time, the boards were worried that the project costs would come in higher than expected and that we would then have to come back again anyway. So they just wanted to narrow the scope, which they did, and that was in the motion on town meeting floor, to just the ADA design. So one of their options is to come back and basically now complete the amended motion and basically utilize these approved funds to cover the ADA work, because there's enough funding there to accomplish the ADA work. And we'd have about a million dollars left to put towards the HVAC when we get to that point. We would need, and so that was the discussion that we kind of put back in front of them so they could think about it. You can see that the 1,375 is already borrowed and sitting there. So it's attractive to consider that using those funds, take a big chunk out of the 2,600 for the project. And if they then, either way, there's a borrow that has to happen for those other funds. So, you know, they have to figure out what they want to do. If you go back a slide, they could just borrow that whole amount and then leave all the other money there for us to roll into doing the HVAC, because there are options for the fact that we could start to bundle some of that work. If we in good faith demonstrate that we're moving forward on the ADA, we could also go ahead and bid and take steps on the HVAC. And if they want to leave all that money there for us to do that as a part of the package of the work, that would be really smart and just bid this as a new borrow. So we talked through that. And I think they need to decide. Given the numbers that are coming forward at town meeting, you know, if they really want to limit the scope of the borrow right now in this fiscal year, they might opt, to go to the other slide again, that, you know, leveraging that 1,375, which is already borrowed and sitting there, would be, you know, be a help this year. So that was a discussion they were starting to have. We left it with them. And we were clear that what we most wanted was for their approval to move forward with the project. And we deferred to them on the best financial steps to move it forward. I've been invited, I think, to go back next week, either Wednesday or Thursday. Just, it might be with Capitol Committee. They might try to queue up a meeting, or they might want another select board discussion before the vote. So that came out of last night's meeting. That was last night, right? Yeah, last night's meeting. And so that's kind of where this article stands. I went through it all with Steve before I went over to present. And he was in favor of how I brought it forward. And we are in good shape now to wait and see, you know, what they decide to do. So it's a financial discussion now. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. So how come we went from 5 million to 2.1?
Let me help you with that.
That's a big difference.
The 5 million came out of the process we had last year that was in, actually, at the end of COVID. Nobody wanted to go to work. And anybody who would want to go to work had, basically, we turned down other projects that were bid because we thought they were way too expensive. We were hopeful that when we bid it again in a normal market, that in fact, we would see what it was really worth rather than the fear and issues associated with doing any work in the new inflationary economy that was there. You might recall that things almost doubled in the period from January of 2023, I think, to March or so. And in fact, at this point, we're still seeing decreases in the cost of stuff. But anyway, that was the outcome of it. And that was the same reason why FinCom and the Board of Selectmen restricted how much money we had available to design only, so that in fact, we could come forward with a new bid, which we did. And in fact, we experienced the same thing in all of the bids that we're going to talk about.
Yeah. Additionally, when you bid makes a difference. And I think we placed it in a space where people want to queue up their work. So, you know, that gave us an advantageous outcome on the Mill Pond roof coating as well in talking to our consultants. So I think that also, but Steve's right. We just carried really high numbers because that's what they were seeing. And the bid range, I think, was from that, which was the low bid to like 3.4 million. So, you know, there's always, there's always a range.
I mean, I'm not complaining. It's good to see.
Trust me, I hadn't gotten any good news at all. So I was pretty excited, was a little happy dance in the office. So yeah, I think it's good news. I think the important thing is Anita and I will keep you updated as this moves forward. I'll just send you informational emails to just let you know where we are with it. And you can certainly watch that on TV if you want to see us as we continue presenting. We'll have to clean up a very thoughtful article on this once we know what motion they're going to put forward and give a tight, clear presentation on town meeting floor.
I would suggest this. Once the selectmen make their decision as, one, whether they support the article, and two, how they would fund it, that we don't bring in all this stuff, because I think it's very confusing.
Yeah, no, we're going to do something, we're going to streamline it to just the points to be made regarding the motion. This is informational to the committees. I mean, FinCom always wants this level of detail. They wanted to go down all the different rabbit holes of discussion. So it was important last night that I put that back in front of select board and clarified again that it's, you know, that there's lots of players here at this point looking at what the best financial resolution is. And now it sits with the select board and the town manager's team.
The only positive part of this discussion, if we have to go into it, is simply that the overall decisions made generally last year were the right ones to wait.
Yeah, I agree.
But at this point in time, we got to fix it, so.
So I'm going to keep you moving. Let's go to the next one. So the Mill Pond Roof Restoration is doing the seal coating of the roof, which is about 22, 23 years old. And it's in good standing. We do get leaks, but it's not, you know, in a bad place. But it is 23 years old, so you get leaks in the building. They continue to talk about the high-quality care and maintenance our team does on these, which is really, we do annual repair and good care during the year. This seal coating would allow us a new 20-year warranty, and it lets you leave all the existing material in place, which is really good environmentally. And you're basically getting the longevity of the roof in place versus when you get to where you are with Hastings, where you're literally ripping everything off and building it fresh. And so the number is very, very different. You're basically getting the cost cut of what's already in place, you know, not needing to be repurchased. This one was being carried at 1.1 million, and it came in at 972. We put in 98,000 for a tight contingency. This does not require an OPM. It's under the benchmark number. So this is the package of what we need to do this project. There is discussion. This was, this was voted 5-3 opposed to this by FinCom, because I think they feel like we could wait on this one. And because the Hastings roof came forward as an addition, they're looking for something to defer, basically was the argument. And so it was a very respectful conversation and a long one. But that was their thinking, and they're trying to look at it from a fiscal arm. You know, from a, from a roof standpoint, this is a very logical proposal. From a finance process, you know, again, what we know, though, is the longer we wait, the more things cost. So that's what they're thinking about right now. Select board asked some of the same questions, and they haven't voted on any of these. They're waiting until they see what's going on with the ADA. So this is very straightforward. This would be done this summer, and it would give us a good stretch on this roof, which is in good shape. You are in favor of that. You remain in favor of it, and we'll present that, and the will of the town will decide what we do.
I would like to add a couple of things. One that has some bearing on why to do it now versus waiting. As was mentioned, if you look at what the Hastings roof is going to cost, unit cost for it is approximately $88 a square foot. This one is in the order of 17. So how can the same square foot of roof, roughly the same design, end up costing that much difference? And the difference is there's roughly five inches insulation, which at Hastings is wet, and it has to be removed and disposed of. This design is such that we do an overlay over the existing roof, and as long as the insulation remains dry, we get another 20 years out of the roof as it would be. And so it isn't just apples and apples. It's apples and oranges in terms of the benefit you get for the cost per square foot. And I would argue that we have made mistakes historically relative to roofs, which are now super expensive. And in fact, this is not the time to walk away from an opportunity that could save us money in the long run. And the issue is, we got a very good bid on this as a result of the effort made. The argument that our roofing consultant said is they were surprised on all of the bids that we got this year, in part because of the seasonality of being able to go to work as soon as the weather gets better. And so, you know, I'm sort of up in the air in my own mind as to whether we should still push it. And we left it with the Board of Selectmen with this background information to make a decision, whether we postpone it for a year or whether we try to do it and fit it into the budget as it is. We've made the mistake of trying to save money by delaying stuff, but we're now seeing how much it costs for a roof, and it isn't going to go down in the future. One thing that will happen is if we forego the bid, it'll cost us roughly $40,000 to do it all over again. And that's without changing anything. The design is still good to go. There isn't any reason why our consultant thinks that we couldn't use the same documents and go to it again. But there is a reason why we brought it forward at this time, and that's because of the unique application of an overlay and still save the existing substrate. And that saves us a lot of money, as you can see. So with those, with that background, pending what the selectmen have to suggest, they'll recommend, I certainly wouldn't forego this yet. I still think it's a benefit to the town to get the roofs behind us so we can make improvements and other things as we discussed earlier.
And you have, and Steve will be leading that discussion. When you come together, you open up, you have your pre-meet right before you go into the meeting. And if, between now and that time, if the will of the group is that you want to comment on that, you know, as a committee, you know, he can work with you to use that preliminary time where your meeting opens in the library before to discuss it. So it's one that you'll have to, I think, talk about again as we continue to think about the package of partnership. And you will have a meeting to do that next week before you walk into town meeting.
Even if both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend not to go ahead with it, I would still like to make the presentation of the effort that we put in to save money to finish the roof jobs.
Yeah.
People don't understand how much background work goes into this stuff in order to bring a simple fix the roof before the town meeting.
Yeah, we'll work on the presentation being clear.
We'll figure it out.
I have a couple of questions. Can I just ask a question? What is the length of the warranty on the new Hastings roof? How long is that warranty going to be?
The new Hastings roof is 30.
30 years. And then the warranty for the seal coating on Mill Pond would be 20?
20.
It's 20 on top of an existing roof that's been there for 20 years.
Right, right.
So it's giving you a 40-year life, basically, in additional 20 on the existing.
Right, right. It's giving, but, but I mean, I just want to make sure there's no exceptions to that, because you mentioned something about if, I imagine, all, when the design was done and everything was checked, to make sure that there has been no leakage into the insulation, that there's been no, anything like that.
Well, as best as they can figure out, this will work at.
They do, yeah, they do that laser. That's what they do during the laser penetration work to look at it, so.
And again, these are real numbers. These are bid.
Yeah, these are bid and ready to go.
So that's different than where we were in the past.
Yeah, so the next slide. So of the five articles we're ringing for, you have the ADA, the Mill Pond, and you have these three design articles. These are all to stage, being prepared to take care of the high school roof over the next several years. So this is all design work. You never lose the funding advantages of design work for at least three years, typically three to five. But, you know, and we spoke with the select board about that last night. They asked about it. But, you know, the state regulations would be the only thing that would drive them having to modify a design. He said that just, you know, is not usually anything that happens on an ongoing basis. So the design for these would stand, and then these would be placed into the capital cycle in the next two to three years. First is to do the design for the rim that goes around the high school. It is structural and has integrated needs in the total roof design. Taking the C-Wing, which is the newer portion of the high school, to do the seal coat on. And then, and you can see the higher number there means it's a much larger section of roof that gives us extended life on. And then you have sections A and B, which are original, and D to be designed for complete replacement. You go to the next slide for a second. So you can see the high school, you've got kind of different sections. The newest section, I think, is one at the back. And that's the one where you would be doing the seal coat. And then the A and B are those more towards the front. And there's, again, I don't want to misspeak, but I'm just giving you a sense of how those roofs chunk out. And these three designs would end up basically impacting, updating all of them over the next two to three years. So this is the design work to be ready to do that. If you go back, so each of these bid packages will go out. These are rough order of magnitude based upon estimates for the project. And then we will come to town meeting in the future with a hard bid number like we're doing with the ADA and the Mill Pond. These were all positively voted 7-1 by FinCom. The only one that they really deferred on was the Mill Pond with a 5-3 no. And then these are ready to go. If these are voted, we'll put them out to design bid in the spring.
I think the select board voted in favor of these as well.
Yeah, I think they feel good about these.
Is the C-Wing restoration technology is identical to the one that's.
Yeah, same, same process. Yep, yep. If you go to, any questions on those? That's pretty standard. If you go to the next slide, then we have the roof, the Hastings roof, coming through the deCam process. You've seen this before, I'm just repeating it. The bid came in, they felt advantageously in its number, and we're carrying three, almost 385 for contingency and OPM costs. And that project would be at 4,142,800. So this one would be ready to go. We would basically go out to bid as quickly as it's voted at town meeting and move forward on that work, so it would be happening in the summer. All right? So this is work you've seen, it's work you did, it's ready to go. The numbers are in. Now we wait on the motions, we read the motions, we make sure they're all clean, and we do our presentation preparation. our presentation preparation, and then you guys meet before we go into town meeting. So that's kind of the process that brings us to the floor. I think it's really good when you all read the rest of the warrant, and you get time to figure out what all the articles are and the pacing of town meeting, and then we'll be well-prepared and, and ready to go. All right? All right. And we will have, I believe Adam will come to town meeting with us to be available for roof discussion. Steve also is available to kind of help around the engineering discussions, I think we can present well and answer questions. All right, that is it.
Any other comments on roofs and Capitol articles? Yeah, we've sort of worn this stuff for an awful long time, it'd be nice to get it done.
Yeah, you've been listening to it for a while, too, I feel like all I've done is repeat it in different settings, but it is helpful as you get into town meeting, people just have to wrap their head around it a couple times. And every time we answer someone's question, it helps people arrive prepared. The budget video that we just pushed out today will do the same again, all of these are just, you know, you're trying to take complex issues and give people an opportunity to get knowledgeable on them before they come to town meeting and vote, which is essential. And so, it's well worth every time we repeat it here so that families listening and voters have an opportunity to just learn and think about how they want to come to town meeting and vote. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' requests. Before we start, could I see a hand raised, please, to tell me who would like to speak to us? Okay, apparently we have three, given that, yeah, I think we have three. So we have, the way that we've done it in the past is row to row and left to right, so Fred, you're first.
You want me to read the policy?
Yes, please.
Okay, so just before we begin, we'll remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your name, your full name and your street address, speak directly into the microphone, please.
Wilfrid Savoy, 41 Chestnut Street. Was seeking clarification of the school committee's understanding of the authority of town meeting, and the reason why I'm, in terms of approval of the school budget, the reason why I'm asking this is, last Monday, I think I heard, I'm not sure who said it, that the town's authority would only be to vote for the recommended amount for the school budget or nothing. Okay, I misunderstood, because the, because Chapter 71, Section 34 does allow for the appropriating authority, school, town meeting, to establish another va, another amount total. Is that the understanding? Yeah, specifically, probably there are pieces in between that either didn't get said and should have been, but the town meeting's authority is to vote an amount of money, up or down, starting with the highest first. Okay, so let's say that there's a recommendation on the floor to reduce the school's budget by a million dollars, okay? And so, the first vote would be on what we put forward and what the town Finance Committee and/or Board of Selectmen would recommend. So to the extent that there's a motion that says, look, I want to remove a million dollars and remove sports from the school, okay? If the town meeting voted the million dollars, it wouldn't be able to remove sports. It would only be able to supply a million dollars, and the school committee and the school administration would have to figure out how to conduct school with that much less money. And that, I think, is close to, if not exactly, what the Mass General laws are. All right, thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
Susan Reynolds, 50 Upton Road. I just sent an email today, not sure that you've all had a chance to look at it, but I will forward it to Tim, I realize I did not have you at the ready, and I just am requesting a meeting with, with the school committee to follow up on some discussions that had occurred back in January regarding the opt-in, potential for an opt-in policy versus opt-out regarding sex education. So I do feel that there's a number of things that need to, that could be said in more than three minutes, and we could have some open dialogue. There is currently an article on the town meeting, and, and, you know, we're really, what we'd like to do is potentially not use this as a non-binding article, you know, for the town, we'd like to just meet with the school committee and have further dialogue.
Well, specifically, the school committee has certain jurisdictions under Mass General Law. The school administration, through the superintendent, has the authority for curriculum, and so to the extent that anything that's being suggested has to do with curriculum, it is not within the jurisdiction of the school committee to change it. Certainly, we could change the people, but we cannot override the administration through curriculum.
Okay, so I appreciate, we've had a busy few months, one of the things that is in your jurisdiction is to hire, you know, superintendents and weigh in on budgets, and also on school policies. I guess that's my new understanding as, as I've looked into things further. So, I realize perhaps you're not the first one to look at it, I did CC it to Amber and Daniel, so it's just an opportunity to potentially have some more dialogue about a potential policy or shift or things that could be considered with more people present than just Amber and Daniel.
Well, I, I think the answer that I would, I would give you is that to have such a meeting before the school committee, we need to research the changes in the, I don't know what the Act is, but it was, it's the School Act of 1993, which basically changed the power of the school committee to do what I just suggested, is Mass General Law responsibility of the schools. To my understanding, the school committee's responsibility is to hire and/or fire, if necessary, a superintendent.
Right.
To create a budget, which we do, to maintain the school buildings, which we do, and to administer the finances of the school through its budget. So those are the rules. Now, to the extent that what you have suggested is something that I think we need to research, because at this point, I don't believe we can do that, and I also don't believe it can be done by town meeting, because the, the Act of 1993 was very specific that the directions of what you do in a school system are directed by the Department of Education, DESE, and, and that's it. And that's the reason why everything that you come in here, here, that we react to is what we're told to do by DESI. If you have any comments or, or points on this, help me, but that's what I understand it to be.
So, I, I think everyone can review Susan's email. We have met on this topic, we just simply disagree. We disagree on the outcome, and we were clear when we met, very respectfully, that the opt-out policy is the model that we have, that's within our purview, and we think it works well for us, and we disagree. So, we answered respectfully, we respectfully disagree, and so they're carrying it to town meeting because they believe that if you hear from town meeting that people want that, that you would pressure us on the policy.
Well, I understand that's, that's, that's what's being suggested.
Yeah, so that, so that is the structure. We have respectfully answered the question, I just want to be on record that when we looked at it, we had a very nice conversation about it.
Yep.
Over an hour with a group of people who wanted that as one of several things they wanted to recommend, and one of them was that they thought we should be doing an opt-in, and we declined. So it has been answered, they just don't like the answer.
Well, yeah, and obviously.
And we respectfully acknowledge that, so, so I don't have more to say on it.
Okay.
But, you know, I.
Are you all set?
Yep, I am.
Because they want to add, add information to this, and the added information is that I understand the policy that we have is what is dictated by the Department of Education.
Yep.
And therefore, to that extent, and given that the Department of Education in its current form has been in place since 1789 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that in all likelihood, nothing will change unless they change it, but we'll do some research and, and respond to your request.
Okay, and I do have copies of a district that does have an opt-in policy, and as I shared, there were many in Worcester that opted out in that email, so that numbers alone, the whole in, opt-in versus opt-out is something that certainly will impact the school, each principal, you know, at a different level, the varying schools. But anyway, I appreciate your time, and we'll revisit it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, it'll be interesting to see what the outcome of this is. Thank you. Sir? Yeah, I did, thank you.
I have three minutes?
Yes.
Just make sure you introduce yourself, and, yeah, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Shobhik Chakravarti, I'm a resident of 295 Turnpike Road and the parent of a second grader at the Armstrong Elementary School. I am here today to request the school committee to consider a sports game of chess as a part of the district's curriculum to support and encourage kids to play this game. Recently, this weekend, we were at the New York State Chess Colastic Championship. It was a fantastic experience to see students from elementary to high school participate and play this game. I had the fortune to talk to many of other chess parents from New York who encouraged me to come and speak about the benefits of introducing chess to the school curriculum in these committee meetings, that's why I'm here today. One mom from Brookline, New York, shared with me their own experience. She gave the example of PS 34 and PS 110 of District 14, where the school committees have seen such immense benefits to the kids from playing chess that they have decided to increase their fundings for the program. I am myself a faculty and an educator at the University of Massachusetts Amherst. As an educator, I have had firsthand experience of the immense benefits of introducing children to chess at an early stage while interacting with many of the young minds in the university. Chess is not just a game, it is a tool that can stimulate the mind, develop critical thinking skills, and build character. Today, given the growing encouragement around the game, even in the United States, I am requesting the school committee to think about introducing this game to the school district. I will briefly explain why including it in our district's curriculum would benefit all the kids immensely. Firstly, chess is an excellent way to develop critical thinking skills. Chess requires players to think ahead and anticipate their opponent's moves. The problem, this problem solving can be applied to many different areas of life, from math and also science to everyday situations. Secondly, chess can help improve academic performance. Research has shown that children who play chess regularly have better memory, concentration, and analytical skill powers. Additionally, chess has been linked to improved language skills and creativity, all of which are essential for academic success. Thirdly, chess can help build character. Chess teaches children the value of patience, persistence, and hard work. Children who play chess learn to accept defeat gracefully and be gracious winners. These are all essential qualities that will serve them well throughout their lives.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
So lastly, I'm, in my conclusion, I just want to request the school committee to consider adding chess, if possible, to our school curriculum. It's not a very expensive endeavor, chess is not just a game, but a valuable tool that can help the students in our district develop critical thinking skills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Since this is the end of the meeting, I'm going to make a comment on your request. I think it's a great idea, we'll figure out how to get it in.
I'm new to this, sorry.
Yeah, it, we do have a chess club in the high school, don't we?
There are a variety of clubs, and through Gibbons, I don't know if Mill Pond has a club or not, typically in Westboro, in many of these structures, we use a club structure for such things as chess, equally around robotics, DECA, which was presenting earlier, so that students can find areas of interest, all of which are important to the depth of good mental practice, sustained work on topics, creative thinking, relationships with friends, all of those things, mathematical concept thinking. So, I think our clubs, they have a range, and typically in Westboro, we've used our clubs to, to facilitate that. You know, we can certainly, at the next meeting, give you an update on, I'll send you informationally, like what our number of participants are and where we have clubs, at least as a part of the conversation.
If, if we can find a, a method or system to do it, would you be interested in helping?
Of course.
And perhaps some other parents, too.
That would be very good, I would be happy to help.
Yeah, it's, it's a great teacher, it's this great teacher. My kids still have trouble beating me, but they do from time to time, that's when you know you're old.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, with that, the, our agenda is over, so is there a motion?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
There a second?
I second.
Aldous in favor? All right, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you to Westboro TV for hosting, and we will see everyone at town meeting on Saturday the 23rd.